Welcome to our regularly scheduled council meeting. In the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is given the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. Each speaker will be permitted three minutes to address the council. The time limits may be changed by the mayor. Thank you for participating in your city government. We always start our meeting with an invocation and pledge of allegiance. Mr. Walker, is Chris Walker here? No? How about Pat Green? Okay, would you please stand for the invocation?
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity. And God, we pray that as you have set people in authority in this great nation, you've also set people in authority within our city. And we acknowledge that they are an extension of your own divine authority. And Lord, as we come into this chamber and as we pause to reflect, we invoke your name. Further than that, Lord, we ask for your presence, for you've promised that wherever two or more joined together in your name, that you would be in our midst. So, Lord, we thank you for that. And Father, I pray for all those wise enough to seek it and humble enough to admit their need of it, that you would grant wisdom and guidance in the direction of the affairs that are before this council tonight. We ask these things all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First thing we have is administration of the oath of office for Mr. Mullins.
Yes.
I'm assuming it's going to be done by our attorney?
No, actually, our city clerk, Tracy Ackroyd Howe, is going to be administering the oath of office. So, Mr. Mullins, you'll probably have to follow her.
You can enhance that with the turn of the screen.
Oh, yeah.
They don't want you to pay attention too much.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Say aye and state your name.
Aye, Keith Mullins.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support
That I will support.
Protect, obey, and uphold
Protect, obey, and uphold.
The laws of the city of Claremont
The laws of the city of Claremont.
The county of Lake
The county of Lake.
The state of Florida
The state of Florida.
The United States of America
The United States of America.
That I am qualified
That I am qualified.
To hold the office
To hold the office.
Of councilmember
Of councilmember.
Of the city of Claremont
City of Claremont.
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely.
That I will perform the duties
That I will perform the duties.
Of the office upon which
Of the office upon which.
I am about to enter
I am about to enter.
To the best of my ability and understanding
To the best of my ability and understanding.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. I didn't remember it being that long ago. Okay. It's a pleasure to have a familiar face again up here, who knows the ropes, if you would. The next thing on our agenda is a presentation. Who is giving that?
Yes, Mayor and Council, I have Mr. Forth. He wants to make a presentation in honor of our late councilmember Ray Goodgame.
Good evening, City Council and visitors. I'm here tonight to give a special presentation to the Claremont Historical Village in honor of Councilman Ray Goodgame. Ray was a champion, a promoter, a driving force behind making the village a reality. I only regret that this didn't happen while Ray was living. It is my sincere hope that this will shed light on the historical village, and in turn, others will come forward with donations of history from Claremont. This has been years coming from me and my family. I'm going to give everyone a very brief eight-minute history of the Forth Cashwell roots in Claremont. My grandfather was Frank Forth. My grandmother was May Cashwell. My cousins on the Forth side were the Brantleys, Ben, Gus, and E.T. The Forths and the Brantleys originally came here in the late 1800s and early 1900s from Georgia. The Cashwells came here from North Carolina in early 1900s. My family and the relatives are listed 26 times in the book Claremont: Gem of the Hills. I'm going to show you three photos of my family to illustrate how deep the Claremont roots run in the family. And the things that you'll be shown are strictly from the family's possessions. They will be given to the Historical Society for preservation. The first photo you see was Frank and the Brantley cousins. This is circa 1900s. My grandfather originally came from what we know was around 1897 into South Lake County. The Brantleys came with him, with the exception of two that came later on, that following year. And photo two, my grandparents, Frank and Carrie May, on the family property. That's circa 1947, just after our house was built. My dad, Charles Schwartz Sr., this picture was circa 1942, just before him going into the service, and several of his friends. I don't know how many people are still alive that remember the old Claremont hardware store.
Excuse me, Mr. Forth, I'm sorry to interrupt you. This is supposed to be acknowledgement of Mr. Goodgame.
It is a presentation
It is a presentation in his honor to get there.
Don't, don't start.
No, no, this is a presentation.
All of a sudden now, this is all about your family. I'm asking
These are being given to the Historical
Mayor, if you would indulge with us, you will see
All right, I'm just asking
I'm just giving some background to it.
To honor Mr. Goodgame.
We are getting ready to do that.
All right.
It's inappropriate.
Go ahead.
It's a deep gratitude that myself, my wife, and our son give up these items to the Historical Society in Ray's honor. This was done so after I had a short conversation with him after one of the meetings, and he expressed the importance of Claremont holding true to its history. The first item that I'll be presenting to them will be the original framed photo given to the workers at the Blue Goose, or it was American Family Fruit at the time, circa 1952, a group photo. There was only a handful of them given out, and as far as I know, it's one of the only ones that remains that was the full size. Item number two was the World War II military items belonging to my dad. One, the medals that he received to go into display. And two, the original article from 1945, which references my dad and the plane that he was on. In one of the missions over Hamburg, Germany, an incendiary bomb was dropped and lodged in the wing. If any of you have ever watched the movie of Memphis Belle, there's an identification to that having taken place. They didn't know if they were coming home, but he did. And by so doing, it allows me the honor of producing these items to be put into history here, because he is a true son. He was born here. And last was number three, the original photograph of my dad in his dress uniform to be placed in that museum. To Mr. Briggs and to the Historical Society, please accept these items with my family's heartfelt thanks to everyone who has worked and donated time to provide a place for these snapshots of Claremont's history. I especially want to thank Councilman Tim Bates and City Manager Darren Gray for their assistance in making this happen tonight. My dad, my grandparents, they were humble people. They would be so proud to have their history produced and shown for a town that they were proud of. Thank you.
You forgot this.
That's okay.
Hold on, hold on. Hold on, and we'll present it. The last thing, because my husband got put off of whatever, is that we have the medals. He was wounded, but he refused to accept the Purple Heart. I'm sorry. In honor and respect of his fallen comrades who did not come back in the squadron, so we are producing these to them, too, to go there, less the Purple Heart, and we have to respect my father-in-law. And then this is an original photo, a second one that his grandmother had, and this is in his dressed uniform. And we proudly give that to you
Thank you very much.
On behalf of our family.
On behalf of the Historical Society, we appreciate it very much, and this would be a good way to preserve the history of Claremont.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to say, the very last project that Ray was working on when he passed away was he wanted to start a collection of Purple Hearts at the historic village, and we started it tonight. So, that's fantastic. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is public comments. Anyone wishing to address the council may do so. You may give your name and address. You may now discuss an item that is on the agenda.
And just for the councils, I let the mayor know right before the meeting, the second presentation is asked. They're going to come back next month. She's not feeling well, so she's going to come next month to do it.
Hello, everybody. I have packets to hand to you, please.
This is for everybody?
Yeah, pass them out.
Hello, my name is Kathy Diaz, and I am married to Byron Beebe. We live at 13625 North Jacks Lake Road in Claremont, which is on eight acres. This property is in the city of Claremont, but it is zoned county. The eight acres beside us has been sold to investors, which was zoned county at the time of purchase, but they immediately changed it to city without any notification to us. They are planning on building a senior citizen living facility on the property, excuse me, which is named Claremont Senior Ridge. They plan on cutting off the only road to our property as of October 1st, which we have been using for over 25 years. We have no other way to leave our property. We have been told that we are not landlocked in because we can make a road to go to Hunt Trace Boulevard instead of leaving from North Jacks Lake Road. We had Carl Thomas Grading come to look at our property. I have an email from him, which is attached, to my attorney that states it would be very costly, and there are a lot of issues with doing so, such as the erosion berm there. I am sure the investors already knew, know about this. We do not have the money to build a road, and we've been trying to sell our property for almost three years now. Why would we build a road if we are trying to sell our property? Besides, most of our money goes towards our medical bills. We have asked the investors to at least make an access road for us since my husband is gravely ill. We definitely need to have an access for the ambulance service, police, fire department to be able to get to our property. I've had to call 911 twice within a six-day period for my husband. He is a very large man, and I cannot pick him up anymore. We also have to use a gate belt to actually help just move him around. I also have caregivers coming here every day, seven days a week, to help him and myself. I have a bookkeeping and tax business that I've run out of my home for 14 years here in Lake County and 20 years out of my home down in Palm Beach County.
Ms. Diaz, your time is up. This is property that is in the zone in the county. There's not anything we can do about it.
Yes, I believe this is not in the city. This is your property.
It's not in the city, but it's zoned county.
Well, there's nothing we can do about it.
But the thing is, is I've been told to contact city and county. I got the runaround on the phone from both people. I've, I mean, we have to have ambulance service.
Mr. Gray, could you follow through?
Yeah, why don't, yeah, why don't I meet with Ms. Diaz? Let me meet with you and go over all the specifics, and I'll do everything I can to assist you
Okay.
in that. Let me sit down with you. But since this property's not in the city, there's really nothing that the council can do, but maybe I could talk to the county and help you.
Well, the developers are quite
And maybe that the project
Are quite involved in the city.
The project she's referring to was approved like a year and a half ago, so they haven't started.
In the county?
No, that one is in the city.
Oh, in the city.
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Gray will be, Mr. Gray will be in touch with you, and let's see if we can help you out. But if it's not property that's in the city currently where you are, there's nothing we can do.
Yeah.
But he will try and get in touch with the county for you, okay?
Let me work with you.
Okay.
I'll follow back up with you.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes.
And he will, I assure you.
I hope so.
He will. We have him on tape.
Oh, this is recorded?
Oh, you bet.
Oh, good.
I'll follow.
Thank you.
Mayor and Council, Jim Purvis, 4206 Hammersmith. First of all, congratulations to Keith Mullins.
Thank you.
As the mayor said, it's nice to see a familiar face, and we all wish you well in your interim term. I want to personally thank the Forths on behalf of just the general citizens in Claremont, 39,000 strong, and probably less than two handfuls that you could count that are true natives of Claremont of more than 25 years. History is very important to a community. I had the pleasure of growing up in a very historical area in downtown Philadelphia, even though I was 17 years old before I ever took the time to go see the Liberty Bell, which I could walk to from my home. But as I grew older, I realized that history is what binds a community together, for better or worse. And unfortunately, the county and a couple of cities nearby us have had the unfortunate exposure to bad history. Claremont shares a wonderful heritage that goes back, actually, to southern New Jersey. Downtown Claremont is a clone of downtown Vineland, New Jersey, because the founders, when they came to Claremont to grow tomatoes like they did in Jersey, didn't have the money to survey the city, so they just capitalized on the layout that they had recently done for Vineland, New Jersey. Even the streets are named the same. My point is, with the beginning of donations such as the Forth's, I'd hope that the Historical Society is starting on a new venture of collecting new and tangible items that they can rotate as a display, rather than just being limited to a handful of items that they currently have. Thank you so much for your time.
Good evening. Chris Ballard, 773 West Montrose in Claremont. I wanted to address the parking problem that's happening between 7th and 8th Street on Montrose. For those of you that might not know the area, it's in front of this building between Choosers and what was City Grill. I've heard for months, I've been to a lot of county meetings and also planning meetings, that there's been parking feasibility studies done in the area that we have adequate parking. Upon following that up with James and Kurt, I find that the parking feasibility studies that have been quoted was actually a city employee about three years ago with a clipboard counting the spots, and that no feasibility study has been done. The reason I'm talking about this tonight is traffic is unbelievable down there, and it's only getting worse by the day. We did our own estimate, there's 47 businesses between 7th and 8th Street, six apartments, and actually 99 public parking spots. That was before last month, when the city decided to create a art walk and give the developer 33 spots back, was cutting our parking by 35 percent. There's actually a bulldozer down there today bulldozing the parking lot, taking back their parking spots. It's, I don't know what the solution is for this problem, but I would ask the council to please do a parking feasibility study. I'm sure you know that the temporary parking that's been done on the church parking lot and also down by the Sun Creek Brewery is inadequate. It creates a huge liability for the county and also the owners of the property. It's not built as a parking lot, there's not adequate lighting there. Somebody could slip on the wet grass. Most of those parking spots are elevated on grass. You basically just took some spray paint and sprayed it some lines there, and now you call that a public parking. I know my dad is 80 years old, he has Parkinson's. He couldn't possibly get up that hill. And I know most of the older people in this community need that area to park. It's kind of ironic, you're going to build an art walk, and then you're going to put the South Lake Art Building out of business, because most of those people are older and won't be have access to that particular spot. But I'd ask the county to make a motion, somebody make a motion, and I think, Tim, because you responded to my email, nobody else has been responding to emails, but to make a motion that we have a professional business or professional organization do a parking feasibility study before we go tear up any more parking lots. This situation needs a remedy. First, usually you build an infrastructure, and then you build the buildings around, but unfortunately, if the word brewery, bar, or restaurant, it's been rubber stamped, and we, everybody wants those down there. So, I'd ask somebody to please come up with some solution and stop kicking the can down the road, so that we can have some parking, because you're going to force those businesses out. They're not going to be able to survive. My taxes have doubled in the last seven years, so we're paying a lot in taxes. We deserve some public parking. Thank you.
Please don't, please don't. You know we don't do that. Charlene?
Charlene Harrison, 4th 939 West DeSoto Street, Claremont. Right now, I am pretty seething. My husband left the building and walked home. Been married to him 43 years tomorrow, and I do not want to be interrupted in my three minutes. It's mine. I said, this is deplorable. This was a presentation. You do not know how hard that was for my husband to give those medals up of his dad's from 1945 that flew in that flying fortress that most of those guys didn't come back. I hope the rest of you on this council get some guts and do something about this, because I had to sit in here and listen for 20 minutes to a dissertation by the mayor who brought up a Popka gas. We don't care about a Popka gas in this town. We don't need 20 minutes dissertation in here to hear about it. Gail, I've known you a long time, but that is the most deplorable thing I have ever witnessed, and not because, do not interrupt me, it's my three minutes.
I'm not, I'm not.
It's three minutes, don't even say a word. You don't know how mad I am.
Yes, I do.
No, I don't think you do. My husband may, but you don't. But let me tell you something. This is unacceptable. This is the people's hall. This belongs to the taxpayers, not to you, not to you, 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 or any of you up there. This belongs to the taxpayers. This was the right venue. Now, I apologize to Judy Goodgame. I am so sorry. This is so disrespectful to Ray. This was in honor of him, this was not about our family. My husband just showed the prominence, and he has the right to. It's a presentation, you don't have a limit on it, and I've heard you go on and on and on about people you have pranced in here that's on your little list. So, you know what? Shame on you. You're probably one of the most ugly, vile people I have ever met in my life.
I asked for clarification, since the agenda said, excuse me, honor Ray Goodgame. So, I asked for clarification.
And you know what? You put my husband off of his game, and he lost his track, and he
I asked for clarification, because when it says honoring Ray Goodgame, my understanding was that's what he was going to do. So, I just asked for clarification.
Shame on you. And the people in this place in town needs to get rid of that woman. We don't deserve to have this. This is a, this is a miracle.
Mayor, Mayor.
That's a miracle. I love Gail, and I should go to her. Oh, God. You get out there, woman.
I'm sorry, Judy, I hope you weren't offended, but I just, I didn't comprehend what the presentation was about. I interrupted to ask a question. It did not, I did not mean to insult anybody.
No, you did.
I'm sorry if I did. I just asked for clarification.
Greg Ammon, 550 East Avenue, Claremont. Every meeting, I know I'm going to come in here, and I'm going to hear somebody being talked down to, somebody being talked rude to, somebody being interrupted, and it's not fair. And it's just not fair. I've listened to Mr. Goodgame, God bless his soul, sitting in key seat, get railroaded by the mayor, and not have a second to rebut anything she said when it was all wrong. You called him out in public, and it was all wrong. And to cut them off when, it's for him. I'm getting tired to listen to the public and the taxpayers being talked down to like we're third through fifth graders in Queens, New York. I'm tired of it. I've lived here for 54 years, 55 years, excuse me, I missed it, my one. I'm really tired of it. And, and Mr. Manzares, I'll ask you at some point in time, if there, if there comes a time when there's a discussion on something that's on the agenda, if there's any opportunity at the beginning of it, if we can get up and rebut, and I'm not asking you tonight, but I'm just throwing it out there, because so many times, these things come up, there's a rebut that's deserving, and you won't let anybody talk. You won't let anybody have a word. And that's not right. It's disrespectful to the public. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Everyone knows, everybody gets three minutes. That's it. I was on this council when meetings used to go until 11:30 at night, because people were allowed to talk as often and as long as they wanted to. And I think you'll agree that people get to the point much more quickly when they do have a timeframe within which to speak. And that's the only reason the rules are there, and those are the Robert's Rules of Order. And we enforce the Robert's Rules of Order. That's what it comes down to. Excuse me.
This is exactly what I'm talking about.
All right. Do we have reports?
Yep. Yes, Mayor and Council, there's a couple changes to the agenda, if you'd like for me to go through those now. And like always, we have a few tabled items, but we should be back on track that, now that we have a full council here. But items number four, five, and six, I'm going to request those, the applicants requested those to be tabled to October the 8th. Tracy, we will have to read in each of the ordinances, and we'll have to do one at a time, these at one at a time, so.
Ordinance 201914, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Claremont, Lake County, Florida, providing for the annexation of a certain parcel of land contiguous to the present city boundaries, providing for an effective date, severability, recording, and publication.
Move to table ordinance 201914 to October 8th.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Chair votes aye.
Ordinance 201915, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Claremont, Lake County, Florida, adopting the Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment for the City of Claremont, Florida pursuant to the Local Government Comprehensive Planning Act, Chapter 163, Part 2, Florida statutes, setting forth the authority for adoption of the Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment, setting forth the purpose and intent of the Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment, providing for the adoption of the Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment, establishing the legal status of the Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment, providing a severability clause, and providing an effective date.
Move to table ordinance 201915 to October 8th.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Chair votes aye.
Ordinance 201916, an ordinance under the Code of Ordnances of the City of Claremont, Lake County, Florida, amending the official zoning map of the City of Claremont referred to in Chapter 122 of Ordinance Number 289C, Code of Ordnances, rezoning the real properties described herein as shown below, providing for severability, effective date, recording for severability, effective date, recording, and publication.
Move to table ordinance twenty-nineteen sixteen to October eighth.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Chair votes aye.
Thank you, and also item number twelve, we are gonna poll, well, the applicants requested that to be polled and we will bring that back next month, so.
We don't have to vote on that.
No action needed.
No, we don't need any action on that. Also, just to let the public and everyone know that Monday is Labor Day, so all city offices will be closed on Monday, and then our first budget public hearing is scheduled for next Thursday in these chambers at six-thirty, and that is September the fifth. So make sure you all show up for that. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, so let's take a look then at the consent agenda.
We're still on reports.
Reports.
We're still on reports, and I don't have anything.
Oh, reports, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was going over the agenda, yeah, yes.
I think you do, all of us enough. You couldn't take away a few more things? I'm sorry. Mr. Manzares.
I don't have anything mattering, thank you.
Mr. Bates?
I don't have a report, but a question, and I know it's premature, there's a storm out in the Atlantic.
Yes.
Probably not gonna hit if it comes this way till later, probably first part of next week. Are any plans being done at this point, I mean?
Yeah, actually, right now, we, in Lake County, we are in what they call Level Three, which is monitoring it as we speak. There is a emergency management meeting tomorrow with Lake County at three PM, and so we'll get more updates, so we're, we're prepared, we're ready. I just tell the, the public that just, you know, stay tuned to your local news as well as our city webpage and our, our social media, 'cause we will put out advisories as we, as they come available.
Thank you, that's all.
Mr. Mullins?
Well, since last we met, no report.
You're going, it's all yours.
No report, Mayor.
And, Mr. Ravis?
I had an informal meeting with the Chain of Lakes Foundation founder, and together we worked on some initiatives that we'll be bringing back for improvements or suggestions to the trail, namely possibly speed limits, some alternate routes for, for cyclists that wanna go fast instead of going on the trail, and some other issues, so we'll be bringing that back to you, but thanks.
And I have no report. All right, consent agenda. The next portion of the meeting is a consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, would you please raise your hand? Seeing none, has anyone on staff or members of the council wish to speak on any of the consent agenda items?
Yep.
Move for approval of the consent agenda?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Chair votes aye. We're up to item number seven, under unfinished business.
Ordinance number twenty-nineteen twenty-nine, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Claremont, Lake County, Florida, adopting the Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment for the City of Claremont, Florida pursuant to the Local Government Comprehensive Planning Act, Chapter one sixty-three, Part two, Florida statutes, setting forth the authority for adoption of the Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment, setting forth the purpose and intent of the Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment, providing for the adoption of the Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment, establishing the legal status of the Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council members and guests, John Cruz, Development Services. Agenda item seven, Hartwood Properties Comprehensive Plan Amendment. The owner, Hartwood Properties LLC, has requested an amendment to the future land use map. The applicant is requesting the city to designate the property with a future land use category of master plan development. The subject site is approximately eighty acres in size, the property is a quarter mile south of Hartwood Marsh Road, east of US Highway twenty-seven, and it's in, in the yellow outlined here on the display, Hartwood Marsh Road, US twenty-seven. A portion of the property has been historically used for agricultural purposes. The current future land use designation is Lake County's Regional Office. The Regional Office future land use category provides for a variety of office uses and some limited commercial uses that support office uses. The applicant is requesting master plan development. In addition, the applicant has requested rezoning to a planned unit development with up to six hundred multifamily dwelling units and up to a hundred and twenty thousand square feet of commercial uses. The PUD will be considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission prior to the adoption phase of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment to ensure the project is capped at the proposed development intensity and will come before yet a later date for consideration. Since the project is located within the city's joint planning area and the inter-local service boundary area, the city can provide adequate public facilities and services, and the proposed master plan development land use is similar to the existing Regional Office, it is logical to support this future land use amendment. The project incorporates residential, commercial, retail, and office uses. With this mix of uses, the most appropriate fut- future land use category is the city's master plan development designation. Therefore, staff supports the applicant's request for a change to master plan development. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval six oh. That concludes staff's presentation.
And, Mayor, council, as you know, this, as well as the next time, the transmittals will be transmitting them up to the state and then they will all come back to you when the development plans are ready for you all to consider.
Okay. Now, I know we have public-
Yes.
...response to this, but it's after we have a motion, okay?
No, you can go ahead and do it, you can open it now.
You wanna open it now?
Yeah.
Or is there anyone that wishes to address this issue? Seeing no one, I'll bring it to the council.
Move for approval of the transmittal of ordinance twenty-nineteen twenty-nine?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Chair votes aye. Item number eight, ordinance number twenty-nineteen dash thirty-two.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Claremont, Lake County, Florida, adopting the Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment for the City of Claremont, Florida pursuant to the Local Government Comprehensive Planning Act, Chapter one sixty-three, Part two, Florida statutes, setting forth the authority for adoption of the Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment, setting forth the purpose and intent of the Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment, providing for the adoption of the Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment, establishing the legal status of the Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date.
Agenda item eight, Bradshaw North Comprehensive Plan Amendment. The owner has requested an amendment to the future land use map to designate the property with a future land use category of commercial. The subject site is approximately sixteen acres in size. The property is located northeast of the intersection of US Highway twenty-seven and Schofield Road, and in the outline, it's, outlined in yellow, it's a long narrow piece, here's US twenty-seven, and here's the southern portion along Schofield Road. This request is being heard concurrently with requests for annexation or rezoning to C-two general commercial. The property is located within inter-local service boundary agreement in the joint planning area. A portion of the property has been historically used for agricultural purposes. The current future land use designation in unincorporated Lake County is Wellness Way Area Plan One. And it's hard to see on the map, but it's outlined in the yellow here. The comprehensive plan designation in the city would be commercial. The applicant desires to develop the property for commercial uses, which include a hundred and forty-room hotel with up to thirty-two thousand square feet of commercial uses. The city's commercial future land use allows up to zero-point-two-five floor area ratio and up to twelve units per acre. This is comparable to what is permissible under the Wellness Way One in Lake County. Staff is able to support the request for the comprehensive plan change, since the subject property meets the requirements for the voluntary annexation, the city is capable of serving the property, it is not in conflict with the city's comprehensive plan, and the property can be developed in a similar fashion under Lake County's Wellness Way One. Therefore, staff reckon, recommends approval of the Large-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment to change the future land use from Lake County Wellness Way One to the city's commercial. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval six oh. That concludes staff's presentation.
This is also transmittals, if anyone in the audience wishes to address the issue, may come to the mic. Seeing no one, I'll bring to council.
Move for approval of the transmittal of ordinance twenty-nineteen thirty-two?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Chair votes aye. Item number nine, under new business, ordinance number twenty-nineteen dash thirty-one.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Claremont, Lake County, Florida, providing for the annexation of a certain parcel of land contiguous to the present city boundaries, providing for an effective date, severability, recording, and publication.
And Mayor, this is just an introduction.
Okay.
Just move it.
Make the motion, or move the approval of introduction, twenty-nineteen thirty-one?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Chair votes aye. Next item, resolution number twenty-nineteen dash nineteen R.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Claremont, Lake County, Florida, granting a conditional use permit to allow for a tire store with eight service bays in planned, in planned unit development zoning district.
And, Mayor, if items ten and eleven are together, if we could present them together and then you have one public hearing and then we'll vote on them separately?
Okay.
Okay. So there's a variance attached with this as well?
Agenda item ten and eleven, Action Gator Tire, conditional use permit and variance request. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow a tire store with eight service bays and a planned unit development. The vacant parcel is located west of the Hammock Ridge Road and US Highway twenty-seven intersection, and on the display, here's US Highway twenty-seven, it runs north and south, and then Hammock Ridge, and the parcel's outlined in yellow here, and also on the star. The parcel is part of the Tuscany Village PUD, also known as the Shops at Hammock Ridge. The Land Development Code requires a conditional use permit for any automotive service businesses. The applicant is proposing a six-thousand-eight-hundred-square-foot building consisting of eight service bays and customer waiting area. No outside storage or displays will be allowed. The service bays will be facing north towards an elevated hill with no view from Hammock Ridge or the adjoining property, and on the site plan, here's Hammock Ridge, the bays are interior, and then this is where the hill is, running north. Access to the site will be from Hammock Ridge Road. The site will be constructed to meet city code except for one variance, and the building will be constructed to meet the city's architectural standards. And here's the elevations of the, the building. The applicant has identified one variance with the project and is seeking a reduction of parking spaces. Section ninety-eight dash fourteen of the Land Development Code requires thirty-eight parking spaces based upon the eight service bays and number employees. The applicant is proposing thirty spaces, thus seeking a reduction of eight spots. The proposed development as design usually services customers at different times of the day, and many customers make appointments to ensure timely service so they don't have to leave their vehicles for extended periods of time. When evaluating a request for a conditional use permit, section eighty-six one forty-four requires specific development standards to be met. Staff has reviewed the application and finds the proposed use will not be detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the surrounding community. Section eighty-six dash one seventy-four of the Land Development Code requires a positive finding on the five review criteria in order to grant a variance, and staff finds the application as submitted does meet the criteria for a positive finding. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit and a variance request for the proposed development. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval five to one for the conditional use permit. That concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Is the applicant due?
Mayor, I'd like to disclose that I did meet with the applicant to discuss this project.
Good, good evening, my name is David Gorey of eighty-three sixty Summerdale Lane, Tallahassee, Florida, and the project manager, working with the developer for the project. We've been working with planning and other members of staff to design the site to meet all of the intent and standards and codes of the city, and they have all been very helpful. We have talked to the church behind us, and we've let him know that we are a tire store, but we are not open Sundays, and we are off of twenty-seven, and we are determined to fulfill all the intent of your code. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, anyone in the audience that wishes to address this issue? Give us your name and address, please.
My name is Eric Fincham.
Wait until you get to the mic, so it's recorded.
My name is Eric Fincham, three-five-two-two Belalago, uh, Mediterranean Drive in Belalago. I know most of you, 'cause I've talked to you a couple times, from the last tire store that wanted to build on that same corner. I am, I was ground zero, my back patio, which we spent fifty grand on, if you remember right, is, was right there. Unfortunate for us, a tire store in that corner is gonna come right at us. I truly, truly meant to come talk to you guys again about the jake breaking, um, I hear it all the time, I have to turn my TV up loud outside or just go inside. A tire store that's gonna, it's gonna drive us crazy, it's not just gonna affect us, it's gonna affect everybody on that side, it will come over, whether it's on that corner or the opposite corner where we talked before, we hear cars, we're gonna hear, we're gonna hear those tires being taken off and the jacks and, and all the rattling, and that's all I wanted to say, I really appreciate you just killing this right now, because it's gonna drive us crazy, thank you.
Hi, Richard Bauer, seventeen eighty-nine, hold on. Okay, so it's Richard Bauer, B-A-U-R, seventeen eighty-nine Belalago Drive, I happen to be the president of the HOA. So I, I heard in the presentation, I just wanna be clear, be clear that all the garage doors are facing the hill, going up the hills, that there are no openings to the building out toward Hammock Ridge?
Yeah. Mayor, they should be addressing the council, and then if there's any questions, we'll ask them.
And I would ask that you move the mic up, or speak to the higher mic, so he can hear you.
Too tall, yeah, okay, all right, so, I'll lean over here. So, yes, so that was one of the questions I had, so the other thing is, I have a question on regarding noise, is there any kind of noise suppression being built into the building with regard to, you know, special acoustic cinder blocks, things like that, that kind of absorb the noise rather than reflect off that hill in the back that goes up toward the church? So that's a question. The hours of operation, I understand you're not gonna be open Sunday, does that hold forever, or is that, could that change down the road? How is that typically handled? If you assign, if you give them hours of operation that say, you're not open on Sunday-
That we approve of.
Can that be a, couldn't that be a variance and approved of later, or is that-
By a future council, yes, but they'd have to come back and amend the conditional use permit to do so.
Okay, and what is-
So it'd have to be a subsequent public hearing.
What would be the hours of operation during the week? Thank you, Mr. Manzares.
We could ask the applicant, once you ask your questions, we'll-
Sure.
I'm, I'm writing them down, so I'm sure they'll address it.
Right, and then the other concern is, just sound in general is, is the big thing for the neighborhood, but the other concern is for, like, filter, is there any potential for oil spills drainage into that lake? Other than that, totally separate subject related to sound, the jake breaking, we talked about that the last time we were doing the tire shop, the other tire shop that was trying to move in, and somebody took on the action to address jake breaking down the road, and has any progress been made on that?
I can answer that one real quick, is that, that is not the city's jurisdiction, that's the state of Florida, so, you know, we, we could contact them-
Do you funnel that up to DOT?
Yes, yeah, and it's gonna be, I'll tell you, they'll be, it'd be very tough.
But it's in process.
Yeah, well, we, we asked the question, yeah, so, but it would also behoove you as the HOA, you can do, you can contact them as well.
Oh, we can do direct.
Absolutely, absolutely, and I can, if you contact my office, I'll give you the contact for it.
Excellent, thank you, sir. All right, thank you very much.
Hi there, good evening, I'm Adam Hildebrandt, seventeen eighty-four Belalago, Claremont. I'm also a board member on the HOA. Um, you know, we, you guys already have petitions signed from the previous tire shop, so you know that nobody wants it around here, period. You have residential areas all around it, just doesn't make sense, they already have a tire shop on fifty, I don't understand why they need to move it into our neighborhood. We have tire shops all over the place, I mean, we need things to go to and to do near our neighborhood, I don't wanna go to a tire shop, I don't- I don't want to go to a tire shop, I don't want to look at it. My, my property actually looks over the lake. I'm building a pool and a, and a nice balcony to look over and see the lake. I don't want to see a tire shop. I don't want to hear the, the air wrenches and all the other noise coming from it. You know, we're in a big bowl, so all of that drainage is gonna go right into the lake. We're worried about environmental impacts, as said before. Just really, I don't understand why tire shops want to build in our neighborhood, and we've said time and time again, we don't want it here. I know, you know, Ray Goodgame didn't want it there either. I know Kings Ridge doesn't want it there. Nobody wants a tire shop in our backyard. You have, that's what you have fifty for. I mean, just coming down here, driving down fifty, there's tons of commercial area where it's not going to be a disruption. We have, I think it's an apartment complex or a condominium or a fifty-five and up community right up the hill there. Sure, they're not gonna want that. It just, it just doesn't make sense. So I just hope you guys follow the same precedent that's already been said, that, you know, a tire shop's not welcome here. Thank you.
Jim Purvis, forty-two oh-six Hammer Smith. I'm not particularly enamored with tire stores. If I have a free thirty minutes in my day, I don't think that that would be high on my priority list to go and sit in their lobby and watch television or have a cup of coffee. But that being said, the property is zoned for this business. The only variance is eight parking spaces, which staff has already basically signed off on with their recommendation to the council. And the developer has apparently learned their lesson from the application across the street and much closer to their development than this is by turning the bays around to face literally probably a twenty or more foot high hill that separates that property from Lutheran Church that sits on top of the hill. And the fact that they aren't open on Sundays is just an added plus. In this particular case, I have to favor supporting this development. Thank you very much.
I am Preston Bolt, four-six-two Valley Stream Drive, Geneva. I represent the owners of the commercial development and the apartments that are adjacent or surround this proposed property and have to agree with Mr. Purvis. It is already zoned. We've met with a number of the staff in making the site plan conducive to eliminate sound, eliminate the impact, move it off of Highway twenty-seven onto a feeder road, and also would support approval. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? All right, then I'll close the open portion. Council?
Yeah, if you'd like the applicant, there was a couple of questions that came up if you want to address, and the first one was the bays and how they're facing.
Sure. Robert Blackerby, I'm a consultant with RRV, which is the developer of the project. We originally, obviously, would love to have had the bays facing twenty-seven, our Hammock Ridge. We understood the concerns for the public. We turned, faced them towards the hill because that's going to obviously deflect the sound and absorb most of the sound. We also took the back of the building, which is now facing the front street, and we added about fifty, sixty thousand dollars worth of Bahamas shutters, stonework, and other things to make it an attractive building so that you just don't have a blank concrete wall sitting there. Additional landscaping and work that we tried to do, anything that we can to make it an attractive project. The store is presently located on fifty. It's an older store, it's been out positioned. You have stores now that are on the other side of fifty, you have stores on twenty-seven that are putting this guy out of business. He's been here twenty years, he wants to stay here, and to, in order to do that, he's got to move because he's been out positioned, he's losing business. That's the reason we're trying to develop the store. It's not a new tire store. We're relocating an existing tire store and hoping to save the jobs and keep the people employed here.
And there, I believe you addressed the noise unless you all have a, and actually, real quick, the bays are, in the, there's a condition in the conditional use permit that they have to be screened from public view and that they cannot face, you know, twenty-seven as well. So that's a condition in there. Yes, and then hours of operation.
Hours typically are seven to six or seven to seven, depending on what the community needs, but that's it. Environmental concerns, there are no more sump traps or sump pits, is what they refer to them as. The days of digging the pits so that the oil could be changed by dropping in, those are over. Everything's done now by hydraulic lifts. There are no more exposures on the environmental side. I think in twenty-some-odd, twenty-eight years, thirty years of operation, this company's had one minor problem in thirty years, and they took care of it. So we carry an environmental insurance policy to cover it in case there is a problem, but again, because there are no more pits, there are no more traps, the chance of environmental is minimal.
Okay, I think that was it.
Okay. Any other questions?
I had two, but you answered one, so it's a relocation of the existing business.
That's correct.
So we're gonna have an empty box on fifty.
I have no idea what they're gonna do with that. They don't tell us their operations, we're just the developers of a new product.
And my other question, if you can go back to the overhead picture. There you go. Is the landscape island, there's probably a sidewalk there, it just doesn't show it in the picture?
Oh, you don't have it across the front of the property.
Right, and I understand the, the access, the only purpose for that is to get to the property on either side, but.
Right.
Between that twenty-four foot strip of pavement, is there a sidewalk for people to walk on?
They will be required to put one.
It would be required, yes.
Okay, it just didn't show in the computer. Thank you.
Sometimes the pretty pictures don't tell the whole story, but they'll put me there.
Any other questions, council?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. How many parking spaces are at the existing facility?
I'm sorry?
How many parking spaces versus bays are at the existing facility?
I don't know. Again, we really don't get involved in their existing facilities, we just construct new facilities, and upon that new facility being opened, everything has to shift to us. So I don't know the exact answer to that. With the existing facility, I don't know the answer.
Anybody? No?
Just overall stores, this looks like more from my experience with the old Eckert Tire.
Yeah, I don't think they have eight bays currently, so it would be less parking spaces probably now. The thing I like is, we didn't want any more tire shops, but this isn't a new one.
That's right.
It's an existing family that wants to stay in Claremont, number one, so it's not another tire shop. We're not increasing the number, it's, it's existing. Second of all, the reason I'm at is I wanted to see exactly where it was at, and I don't have a problem with where it's at. It's not on fifty, it's not on twenty-seven, it's, it's on Hammock Ridge, and it looks nice, so I don't have a problem with it.
But it's still on that corner where we.
It's not on the corner.
You a few months ago denied.
See, that's, that's what you have, that's why you should go out and look at it, it's not on the corner.
Well, they called me, I wasn't able to accommodate the schedule, so it didn't work out.
That's important to go out and look and see where it's at.
Well, I mean, I know exactly where it's at, I mean, I live not too far from there myself.
Yeah, it's not on the corner.
But I've got a question, I'm a little confused. So this, there's a conditional use permit is what we're looking at.
Right, sir.
But somebody mentioned that it's already approved?
No, it is under, is it C one zoning? And under C one zoning, tire stores, they're, they're allowed but only with a conditional use permit. That's why it's in front of you tonight. Correct.
Okay, okay. I missed that, okay. I mean, it's definitely a nice-looking building, and I, you know, like what you've done, but I personally can't get behind this. That's just my personal opinion, especially, you know, just denying one not too, too many months ago.
And I do have one other question, and I don't, maybe city staff can answer this. The property behind it, we keep talking about this hill, does that belong to the church? Is there a possibility that someday that is going to be developed into something else and those bays will then face residences or who knows what?
No, ma'am. We own most of the hill. It's not really very usable because it's mostly just pure sand, but we do own it, so it's for landscaping buffers and other things, but it obviously will never be used for anything else.
It looks like their property lines adjoin each, the church and this property adjoin each other.
I was just thinking, if the church moved someday, what would happen to the property behind it?
Yeah, that, that church could, yeah, they could develop that property, right?
Do you all own all three of those parcels that are there, or just the one?
Actually, Mr. Bolt can.
Do you own all three of them? Do you have plans for the other two at this point?
If you have tenants.
I didn't hear.
Always find a tenant. I just didn't know if you had some audio in the process of plan.
Sorry, they couldn't hear you, so.
Do you have tenants?
Yes, all the land surrounding on that commercial is owned by the Shops at Hammock Ridge, who I represent, and yes, if you have tenants. And you'll note, it is one off of the corner and not directly on the corner, doesn't run on the, on, anywhere on twenty-seven, it is off of Hammock Ridge. We've got one great tenant right now, which is Chick-fil-A, and looking to continue to add, and we have some more underway that will be coming to you in this process.
Mayor and council, one of the items you could consider, since it was brought up about hours of operation, that is not in the conditional use permit, so if you want to restrict hours of operation, you can place that into the CUP, you know, if you want, if you would like.
Let me just ask, when you say it's, business is open from seven AM?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd have a problem with them starting to work on this equipment at seven AM.
The problems we have is a lot of people on their way to work, will stop and drop their cars off.
Yeah, I can understand you being open.
Right.
What are your working hours?
Typically, seven to six. Whenever we're open, we're obviously working, but we open so the people on their work, on the way to work can stop and drop their cars.
That's typical.
Yes.
Is it possible to not use pneumatic tools until eight AM?
I don't think, again, it's an operational question that the owner of the company would have to deal into.
Not a rumbling. All right, just, you know, trying to think of the people in that area.
True.
I mean, if they're gonna start with the tools, like Mr. Mullen said, at seven in the morning, that would definitely be, you know, an impact on their lifestyles.
Just to let you know, our noise ordinance that we have approved as in the city is seven, they can start at, anyone can start at seven AM and it goes to eleven PM, I believe, right? Seven to eleven. Anyway, our noise ordinance starts at seven, so anything before seven cannot occur, but anything from seven on is the ordinance that we have.
Do you have noise level limits?
Yes.
Yes, there's.
Right, I know, I'm saying, we do have.
So if there is, if there is a, an issue, you know, of course, you know, our code enforcement department can follow up with that.
And even more to that issue, in the conditional use permit, there's some special language that if there is a noise problem, and it's documented that the conditional use permit itself would come back in front of the city council for further corrective action.
Okay, just want to make sure it's covered.
That's in section, that's in section two, six of the proposed conditional use permit.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, any other questions? Okay, I need a motion.
I move for approval, resolution twenty nineteen nineteen R.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Chair votes aye. You voted aye.
I voted nay.
All right, you have, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was torn. I'm still torn.
Well, you're not answering. All right, let me ask this again. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Chair votes aye.
Passes three-two.
Move for approval, item number eleven, variance request.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Chair votes aye. Now, they can also, all the other people from before. Okay, the utility agreement was full. We're up to ordinance number twenty nineteen dash thirty-nine.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Claremont, Lake County, Florida, imposing a temporary moratorium for one hundred and eighty days on the acceptance of any application for and/or the issuance of any permit, conditional use approval, site plan approval, and any other official action of the City of Claremont having the effect of permitting or allowing development and/or construction of any multifamily development, excluding with conditions such applications submitted prior to August twenty-one, twenty nineteen, or approvals for the continuance of an existing multifamily development. The temporary moratorium shall apply to all real property located within the corporate limits of the City of Claremont, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Move for the introduction of ordinance twenty nineteen thirty-nine.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Chair votes aye. Meeting is adjourned.